A note for the record that we have a quorum of commissioners. If anybody is going to speak today for public comment or comment on any of our agenda items, we have a sign-in sheet. We are required to get your name for the minutes. I ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I want to look for a motion to approve our agenda.
It's my motion, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, which consists of a routine-type business like personnel actions, bills to be paid, various reports, all of which are available in the auditor's office for public record. Anybody from the public like to comment on any item on the consent agenda? Would any commissioner like to pull any item from the consent agenda? Look for a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to our regular business. First item is consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign the Office of Violence Against Women Training Technical Assistance Subrecipient Grant Agreement with the South Dakota Office of the Attorney General. Good morning, Mr. Hager.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Daniel Hager, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. I appreciate you saying that so I don't have to. This is actually good news. The commission may recall you'd previously authorized my office to work with sheriff's office and to attempt to obtain this grant. They have awarded it, so I'm asking the commission to approve the chair to sign accepting that money. In a nutshell, without taking a bunch of time, we're excited about this grant and what it can do for our combating of domestic violence intimate partner violence. It's $375,000. That'll be over three years. The goal and the vision that we would have internally in the office to have that domestic violence team that's working on grand jury is working with our VWA team to really make sure that we are staying connected with those victims during the grand jury process. That's a time where we lose a lot of cases with people not wanting to cooperate. We also have a community response team partnering with the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office, the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, Sioux Falls Police Department, the South Dakota Network Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault. We have a nonprofit that's going to work to provide interpreter services. And then we also have a statewide lethality review team to examine some of those cases that unfortunately have gotten to the point where someone has been murdered or killed by one of those intimate partner violence situations and really looking to see, well, where are areas that we could have done better. So we have an impact in our office, in our community, and then looking at the statewide response to that. So again, this is good news and hope that each of you will support accepting it. Happy to answer any questions. I know that Captain Bosman's here as well. It's a good partnership.
As is our custom, our practice, we take public comment on this agenda item. Anybody like to comment on this agenda item? All right. Turn it over to the commission then. Commissioners, questions, action? I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a lease agreement for the KKLS radio tower site. Captain Bosman, good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This morning, in front of you, I have a request to sign a lease agreement with Town Square Media. This is for space on the KKLS tower, which is the really, really tall tower north of Humboldt. If you ever drive on 19 out there, you'll see it. This would be part of the last tower out of our five new tower sites in the county for the radio infrastructure program that is ARPA-funded. So with this agreement, that allows us to put two antennas on there. One's a transmit, one's a receive, and then they would be connected into their shelter down below with our technical radio stuff for Motorola. This is a five-year agreement with monthly payments to them with an additional five years, same terms and conditions eligible on that lease. Right now, Metro Communications had been kind of holding that space out there with some older fire paging equipment that is going to be looked at if we can use our new digital P-25 compliant equipment to enhance and actually bolster that fire paging. So not only is it going to be used for transmissions of talking between first responders, but we can also maybe use our new equipment to have a better paging capability for rural fire out there as far too. So we're kind of really excited to get it out there. And I said, this is our last. We've done four other agreements in front of you before for the other four sites. This is our last site, number five, for your consideration.
Thank you, Captain. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, action, questions, comments? Commissioner?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Commissioner Benega?
I'd just like to make a comment that I think we've been at this for quite a while to get the entire county covered so they can communicate with each other. And I appreciate the sheriff's department and everybody else to make that work. So thanks.
Call the roll.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider bid results and award recommendation for Project MC 2306, Structure 518134. Replacement and authorized chair to sign an agreement with BX Civil and Construction, pending South Dakota Department of Transportation. Concurrents. Good morning, Jacob.
Morning, commissioners. We held bids here a couple of weeks ago for this structure just east and north of the Crooks-Renner exit. Bids came in awesome. Engineers estimate is 1.1. All seven bids came in under that cost, so we'd like to award to BX.
Public comment on this agenda item? Commissioner Bender?
So I mean, obviously, the bids did come in great. I'm just curious, is that more bidders than we've seen in a while?
It is, yes. It's considerably more bidders than we've seen. Generally, two to four bidders is what we would have on a box covert like this. Last year, we bid one both cast in place and precast, and we had four bidders on it, which bidding in both ways would open it up to more bidders. A lot of it has to do with just the location where we are in Sioux Falls. This is where a lot of the labor is for these contractors, and they don't like to travel a lot, so it's a good time of year to bid as well.
Great. Well, thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a right-of-way purchase agreement between Minnehaha County and Edward, Indiana Knowles for Structure 5018134, same structure we just talked about.
Yes, same structure we just talked about. This right-of-way extends along the length of the property, actually on both sides of the road this property owner owns. This gives us room for construction, and it's also additional right-of-way just for the future for roadwork as well. A hundred-foot of right-of-way is what is standard for the planning and zoning requirement when somebody purchases and plots a property within Minnehaha County.
Public comment? Commission? Would make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign the following Old Courthouse Museum annual lease agreements. We got two of them, one between the Genealogical Society and the other one with the Historical Society. Morning, Bill.
Good morning, commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Land Heritage Museum. What you have before you is two annual lease agreements for space at the Old Courthouse Museum. One is between the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society that occupies about 600 square feet on the second floor of the Old Courthouse Museum, and the other one is for the Minnehaha County Historical Society that has roughly 300 square feet on the first floor of the Old Courthouse Museum. Both of these organizations are private nonprofit corporations. They are volunteer organizations. And the law, we are not charging rent, and state law requires a unanimous vote of the commission and the annual lease. And my recommendation is to authorize the chair to sign the lease agreements.
All right. We do this every year. Any public comment on this agenda item? Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve?
Okay, so we're going to, a motion to approve the lease agreement with the Genealogical Society?
That is my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Call the roll.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now look for a motion to the lease agreement with the Historical Society.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on. Consider a motion to adopt a resolution establishing 2025 elected department head annual salaries. Morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. It is time for our annual conversation about elected department head pay. This time, of course, we're looking at 2025, so the attachments I have for you include similar data to what you looked at during the budget hearings. This first page includes a breakdown of what the 2024 salaries are for our elected department heads in comparison to our comparable organization's pay in 2024 as well. So the key thing to remember here are really two things. First, you're comparing 2024 to 2024. All those comparable entities are making adjustments for 2025 as well, and we don't have that information yet because they're having these kinds of conversations right now, too. The other thing to remember is that our comparisons, that data has changed significantly since we've done our comp study, our original comp study, many years ago. So where we had a lot of good data points before, now we have some, and they're good data points, but not as much as we did. So that salary ranges that are there can be easily influenced by how long somebody's been in office, what kind of turnover, and even whether or not they have that same type of position in our comparable entities. Where you see the NAs, it's because those organizations don't have a range base and a range maximum. The bottom half of that gives you a couple of examples of what salaries could look like if you provided a 3% increase and a five and a half. The reason we chose to give you those two examples are because the 3% is what was included in the payroll budget, and the 5.5% is comparable to what most county, full-time county employees would receive for the upcoming year. So in other words, that's the combination of the matrix adjustment and the average amount per step increase. The next page that I've included for you is that comparison to other similar positions. The top part is the elected and the appointed department head pay. Again, what's key to remember here is the reason you see the elected department heads highlighted or not grayed out is because that's their current rate of pay in comparison to what your appointed department heads will be making for 2025 as we go into it. But it's intended to give you a comparison so that you know where you're comparing to for 2025 rates. And then the bottom part is information about what those chief deputies would be earning, again, going into 2025. And you'll notice that both the top tier and the bottom tier reflects that we have a few staff who are maxed out. In the briefing memo, I indicated that I would attach two resolutions for you. I apologize, that was an error on my part. We were only attaching one resolution for your consideration, and that is with a 5.5% increase. The reason we provided that is because that's similar to the approach that you took last year, and in recognition that we're currently in a compensation study gathering information so that you can start looking at that information next year to make decisions about really what we want to be paying all staff, full-time, variable hour, and elected. Those numbers can be changed, of course. If you don't like the idea of the same type of approach you took last year and you want to look at a different number, we can update those numbers for your consideration, but 5.5 was included in the resolution. Do you have any questions?
Before we go to questions, we'll take public comment on this agenda item. Anybody like to speak to the commission about this resolution? All right. Now we'll take commission questions, action. Commissioner Bender?
So Carrie, I had a question about the base salaries. The base we established just so that somebody's running for office, they would know that that's at least what they're, the minimum that they would get. But that doesn't necessarily tie the commission's hands. If something happens, for example, we wanted to appoint, you know, some terrible thing happened and the department head was not able to serve, and the commission had to appoint somebody into that position and was looking at an existing employee who might be making above that base, the commission would have an opportunity to adjust that base to reflect, take into account the years of service that person had.
Sure, that's a good point. So if you go to the resolution, it actually includes two sections. That first section, under number one, and these can be changed, of course, too, if you wish, but these are the same base salaries that we included last year in the resolution, knowing, of course, that we're going into a comp study. That's intended just to give people who are running for office an idea of what the base number is. So state statute sets up different base salaries that we consider to be probably too low, given our area. So this number is here just to give people an idea. And yes, if you had something happen during the course of the year and you had to look at appointing, or you could certainly look at a salary that's different than that's here, as long as it's at least this level.
All right. Thank you.
I think a great example would be if the sheriff, we've got a base range of 108, and our current sheriff getting paid considerably more than the base rate, and most elected officials for that matter. I think it would be unreasonable to assume that if we appointed a new sheriff that they would come in at what Sheriff Milstead after 30-some years of being the sheriff would get the same pay, but at least they'd know if they're running for office that the minimum that they would get paid would be the 108.680. And if we had to do an appointment, and if it was a 20-year police officer or 25-year sheriff's department employee, that we'd probably pay them more than the 108, but not as much as the 196. We're not, I guess what I'm saying is we're not obligating ourselves to just pay the minimum we can pay. I think that was your point, Commissioner Bender. We can pay more than the minimum based on qualifications.
Yes.
Any other comments? Commission, action?
I just would say that I think in light of the comp study that we're doing this year, I think that more or less maintaining status quo by giving the 5.5% increase to all the elected officials other than the commissioners, because we're not being considered right now, makes sense. Just kind of keeps everybody on par, gives us time to see what the comp study comes back, see if we get any different data that we could make a little more informed decision based on. So I would be in favor of adopting the resolution that was in fact attached, that would just keep the elected officials kind of on par with all the folks that they supervise.
I would agree with that statement and like to make a motion, or is it a second? Or did you make a motion?
That motion, Commissioner?
I can make it a motion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Commissioner Leinberg?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Carrie, could you remind us just the timeline for the comp study and how that's going to fit into the budget and when, what that information is going to help us with?
Good question. Currently, our consultants are gathering that compensation data. They're looking through the position questionnaires that employees completed over the last couple of months. Their intent is to have a draft report hopefully ready for us no later than January, early February, so that information can be finalized by March, so that you can take into consideration anything that's been gathered through that during budget hearings in approximately June of the next year.
So in the next year, we're going to be having conversations, and maybe we would choose to do something different at that point. But I would, I would agree, it makes sense, I think, to stick with a blanket amount for everyone at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have motion, second. No further discussion. Please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to approve the 2025 retail on-sale liquor license renewal application for Triple J Incorporated Doing Business as the Alibi. I read fast, so let me give Kim a second.
Good morning, commissioners. Kim Christiansen of the Auditor's Office. As requested at the November 19 meeting, I am bringing forward for your consideration the continuation of the approval for the 2025 retail on-sale liquor license application submitted by Triple J, Inc. Concerns were received from the Planning Office and from State's Attorney's Office regarding the zoning and the use of the property for the renewal application set forth. Renewal application was received, and the establishment did not have any violations during the last, during the current licensing period. In addition, in your packet is a memo from Planning and Zoning regarding their concerns. And if you have any questions, I would ask Scott Anderson to come forward and help with that. You have any questions for me?
All right. Scott, do you have anything to add?
Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. I did prepare a memo for you. So the jux of the memo is that the property is Zone C Commercial. There was a bar that was operating or had been operating there. It has been discontinued for more than a year. There, the previous bar was illegal non-conforming use, which sometimes in laypeople's terms we'll say is grandfathered in. After one year of non-operation, that non-conformity goes away. So I just wanted to alert the commission that if a bar is to be operated in this location, they would need to obtain a conditional use permit to bring themselves into compliance with the current zoning of C Commercial. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, that it, that that non-conformity is no longer there. It needs to come into compliance with the zoning ordinance eventually, if they're going to operate a bar.
So just for clarity, not really a question, but for clarity, we can, the action before us is to approve their liquor license, not to approve their operation as a bar.
That's correct.
So we can approve the liquor license, but if they want to reopen, they have to reapply for the conditional use permit?
They have to apply for one. They never had a conditional use permit.
Okay, they would have to apply for one.
They have to apply for a conditional use permit to operate a bar or a lounge.
Okay. So again, for clarity, so that we all know what we're actually approving here. So I'm going to move it to public comment. Anybody from the public or the owners here, if you'd like to speak, please?
Justin Johnson for Triple J. We've been operating there for 20 years. We have have sales on in the last year. With construction that went down and shut down our access point, we were also with an issue with a lawsuit because of the damage that was done to us. So I would disagree with him. We have had sales in there. All of our licenses have been current. Our plan is to open that up after the first of the year.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We've had no problems for 20 years there.
Okay. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Commissioners? We are looking for a motion to approve the renewal application for this bar, for this liquor license. Commissioner Bender?
So I'm trying to making that motion with the clarification that the entity will not be able to reopen until they go through the conditional use permit process, correct? That was my understanding.
If I, just a minute, sir. I guess it would be up to the entity in my mind, and I'm going to look for a legal opinion on this maybe, but if they could prove that they had sales or had been operating, I guess we're under the impression they haven't been operating. They're saying they have been operating, so I, I guess the burden of proof of operation would be back to the applicant to prove that they are still able to operate under the old... Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Eric Bog, Deputy State's Attorney. Yes, per Director Anderson's comments and per their own answers to interrogatories with their lawsuit with the city of Sioux Falls, they did say that their last day of business at their current location was September 24th of 2023. So by their own admission, they have not had sales within the last year. So in order to operate, a conditional use permit would be required.
Okay. So again, going back to the, the action on this agenda item is to approve their renewal application, so.
I just wanted to make sure I had, I was being clear as to what was going on here. I'm happy to make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Yeah, I would second with just the comment as the liaison in planning and zoning. I think we could revisit that if the applicant provided new information, or we could deal with it at a conditional use permit hearing. If it is mooted out and they're grandfathered in, I think that's an issue for planning and zoning, but I'd be supportive of just approving this license, and we can jump through those other hoops later if applicable.
Further comments? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign decedent transport agreement between Minnehaha County and Dakota Embalming and Transport Incorporated for a one-year term beginning November 30. We've had a lot of discussions about decedent transport.
Yes, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. Just as way of background, by way of background, our current vendor provided notice to the county on September 30 of their intent to terminate the contract earlier than the original expiration date, which was February 28, 2025. So that puts the expiration or the termination of the current agreement this Friday at midnight. What we've done over the past, of course, of the past two months in cooperation with the sheriff and the sheriff's office, the county coroner, we've reached out to various other entities throughout the region, throughout the area, to identify a suitable replacement for this professional services agreement. We had very minimal offers or quotes provided to us in terms of who can sustain this particular operation. Again, these are removals and transports that are directed by the coroner's office, in other words, required to go to the coroner's office for some sort of investigation. We have about 200 to 225 of those per year throughout the county. In the course, again, of these discussions with various vendors, Dakota Embalming and Transport did identify and put forth a draft, a proposal that you see generally the major terms of down here. This is not dollar-for-dollar, but also the existing contractor did provide a proposal, too. This one was very specific, and we have very good assurances that will, and confidence that they'll be able to meet the terms of the contract. We still have a little work to do. We'll make sure that we coordinate with Metro to make sure that the right phone calls go out starting Saturday morning. But overall, this will be a one-year contract with the option to extend for an additional year. And certainly, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, that's all I have, and I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Public comment on this agenda item? Tom, I know you've had some, more than a few sleepless nights trying to get this thing together, and it's one of the more interesting functions of county government that if somebody dies... dies, somebody has to pick them up, and it's a very interesting discussion, to say the least. So I appreciate your hard work on this, and Dakota Embalming for stepping up and working with us on this project. I think it makes a lot of sense, so. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Commissioner Blainberg.
Thank you. Just to echo your comments, I appreciate all the work that you put in and all the time that was spent on this, and I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any other comments? All right, call the roll.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye, motion carries. End of our agenda, and now we're at the opportunity for public comment. We allow people five minutes, a total of 30 minutes for public comment. Now's your time, if you'd like to address the commission on any non-agenda item. All right, moving on then. Commission Liaison Reports.
Let's see, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kipli.
I'll lead off with planning and zoning last night. Couple of things coming out of that. We had another applicant for medical cannabis license out, a different parcel, but the similar location on the east, northeast side of the city of Sioux Falls into the joint jurisdiction. So that was approved by the Joint City-City Planning Commission last night. The planning, the County Planning Commission also approved the version of the comprehensive plan. I know Commissioner Blainberg was able to make the Hartford session. I went to the Brandon session. I think you win, I think the Hartford session had the most attendees, so I think there were like 40, 45 people, is what Scott said.
I think close to 40.
So we got good public feedback in Del Rapids, Brandon, and Hartford, then also an online code, like an online survey, so quite a bit of feedback on accessory dwelling units, building eligibility, just rural growth opportunities. And then that would be approved into the comprehensive plan. I think Scott wants to bring that to this body in January or February, and then we'd go through the work of actually amending the ordinances to comply with those revisions in the comprehensive plan. So 2025, we'll probably see an ordinance amendment about accessory dwelling units, an ordinance amendment to ease some of the transfers of building eligibility to adjacent parcels, and just other things to kind of update around the edges of the comprehensive plan. But that was something we can take pride in, that we did that internally. Some other entities, sisters, cities, counties in the area are going through similar comprehensive plans, and they're hiring that out to consultants, so the fact that Scott's team was able to do that internally was a big win. And then the other thing is, last night was the last Planning Commission meeting of the year, and we had two commissioners that are coming off of that body, so we'll be taking applicants to do, to have two new planning commissioners in 2025. That's what I've got from planning and zoning.
Could I follow up with a question?
Blainberg.
Thank you. Is the survey still open for the comprehensive plan?
That's a good question. I assume so, because I don't know if they've functionally shut it down. I don't see, I think Scott stepped out, but that would be something, and yeah, obviously, they, they were using the QR code at the meetings, and then, yeah, an online option. But yeah, that would be something we could continue to solicit, any public feedback. But yeah, it's done at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. Now it's, essentially, is we could have another hearing or set of hearings, whatever this body wants to do, to get that final set of public input before we adopt it as our comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
The Safety and Justice Challenge Implementation Team that Commissioner Blainberg and I are on met last week, and a couple of things that I thought were noteworthy, we got an update on kind of a statewide expansion possibility for pretrial. Pennington County has used some capstone money that they got through the MacArthur Foundation and partnered with the state, and they're going to be doing a trial out there, West River, with the idea that if they can get things to work, that it would, possibly, the state might take on pretrial across the state. And a lot of that is to do with the fact that Minnehaha County stepped up and did that and have shown really good results, both for the justice-involved people and for the impact it's had on jail populations and things. And so I really appreciate the work that Chief Judge Howman and others are doing and working with that to make sure that things that we've learned here in Minnehaha County can be implemented and utilized in that project as well. The other thing we talked about is that we had some excess funding that we'd received from MacArthur, and we had worked with the Link on needs that they might have for some of that money, because that money had originally been used to do the study for the Link, and so we received a proposal from the Link, and we will be giving some of that extra money over to the Link to be used to kind of get to the next phase in leadership and organizational structure for the Link. So I think that will be money very well spent.
Agreed. Who are you?
Bennega. Bennega. I could be anybody you want. Went to a couple of meetings. One was a housing and redevelopment meeting, which was short, but it's a continuation of a conversation about now that the tax increments have been fully used by the developer, that we will eventually take ownership of that property, and that may take a little bit of time, but it'll happen in the next year or so. Also attended the Sioux Falls Development Foundation's annual meeting, where they made an award to Bob Timian in the spirit of Sioux Falls. He was very, I'd say, totally involved in the Foundation Park concept and financing, and we've all seen what that's done for the economic value of the community and growth of employment and property tax values and all that kind of stuff, so that was well-attended and fun to be at.
And a well-deserved award.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Bob's been a friend for a long time. All right. Commissioner Blainberg.
Thank you. If I could just highlight a few things on the calendar coming up. There's a luncheon learn put on with some of the funding from the MacArthur grant. That's on Wednesday, I believe. And then our office staff has been busy planning that legislative breakfast for the legislators in our county to have an opportunity to get together and discuss goals and upcoming priorities, so looking forward to both of those things.
Myself, last Wednesday morning, I had to sue Metro Growth Alliance, monthly executive board meeting. On the agenda, we talked about compensation for the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance leadership and staff, and just the work that they've been doing. The staff of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance was very involved and instrumental in hiring the new city administrator, I guess, for Harrisburg, so Sioux Metro Growth Alliance encompasses Minnehaha, Lincoln County, Turner, McCook. Its reach is growing, very good for the area, just updates from Salem to Garrettson to Del Rapids and Beersford, so very encompassing. Lennox was very discussed with their vote on the water treatment plant, et cetera, so a lot of different items that were discussed there. I was supposed to attend the membership meeting in Garrettson on Wednesday at 11:30, but we had a grandchild born earlier in the week, so I found myself on call for watching the older siblings, so I had to get an excuse to get out of that meeting, so very much enjoyed the time with my grandson, so yeah. This morning, Commissioner Kipli and I met for about an hour with the Public Defender's Office and the Public Defender's Advisory Board, a couple of citizens on that group, myself, Commissioner Kipli. Everything is going very well within budget. They cursed themselves at our last meeting. They said we're fully staffed up, and now they're not. They have a few vacancies, and as most organizations, they're, they have anywhere from paralegals to attorneys. I think they have a total of three vacancies on their staff right now, of about 30 positions. One of the things that I provided for you is something new that I had requested, is an org chart for our public defender, so everybody kind of has a good idea of how they're aligned and how everything works within that office, so. Again, we have about, just about 30, now we have more than that. I didn't count, probably closer to 40 people in the Public Defender's Office, so. All right. Non-action commission discussion. All right, we do have an executive session, so I'm going to look for a motion to enter into executive session immediately following this meeting for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law 125, 2134, and 6.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. We will be meeting next door, so thank you, everybody, for your work today.
Thank you.